To order, please. It is the regular meeting of the City Council of the City of Cottonwood, Arizona, held on April 1st, 2014 at 6:00 PM. And yes, all of the agenda items are for real. There's no April Fools here tonight.[207.01][207.01](Laughter). The next item is roll call. Deputy Clerk, will you please take the roll?
Councilmember Pratt.
Here.
Councilmember Dowling.
Here.
Councilmember Alinsky.
Here.
Councilmember Howery.
Here.
Councilmember Garrison.
Present.
Mayor Jones.
Here.
And Vice Mayor Pfeifer is absent.
Okay. The next item is the Pledge of Allegiance, and we have Cub Scout Jesse Wagner here with us tonight to lead us in the pledge. Would you please come up, Mr. Wagner?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And we have a certificate for you.
Good job, buddy.
On behalf of all members of the council, I would like to give you this certificate for being a good citizen.
I'm surprised I haven't been.
And I want everybody to know that I called Jesse in town, and I asked him if he would like to do the Pledge of Allegiance.
And he explained to me that he was a boy scout, and he could do that, and he decided to pledge on this spot.[291.64][291.64](Laughter).
Very good citizen. Thank you. I'm going to give a little presentation. You can relax. The next item is a brief summary of current events by the Mayor, City Council, and/or City Manager. The public body does not propose, discuss, deliberate, or take legal action on any matter brought up during this summary unless a specific matter is properly noticed for legal action. Mr. Bartosz?
Madam Mayor, Councilmembers, I'm sure everybody saw that the request for bids went out on the south end of 12th Street.
Yay!
And we continue to work to try and get the north side finalized as well. Our Cottonwood Youth Advisory Council will be attending a youth festival in Tempe on April 23rd representing the City of Cottonwood, and it's supposed to be a very positive event for youth and youth leaders in their communities. We have finalized, I think, all the plans for the Saturday, April 26th citywide cleanup, and we'll be sending these out in the water bills to get everybody up to speed on that. And we have contributions both from Clarkdale and from the county to allow Clarkdale and county residents to participate at our dump site as well. On Monday at 11:00 AM, we'll be doing a grand opening of the reclaimed water line that is going from our wastewater plant up to Water the Vineyards at Yavapai College. And just so everybody is assured that it's very safe water, it's A-plus grade fluid, so it'll be a good use of that water. Also, tomorrow night at 6 o'clock at the Recreation Center, we have the first open house for the public to review the plans on the new reclamation plan at Riverfront Park. And that should be an interesting event in terms of how that is really going to be displayed. I think people will be amazed at what this new facility is going to look like and what it does. So, that's it, Madam Mayor.
All right, thank you. Councilmembers? Mr. Dowling?
Let's see here. The bike team is coming along well. The Cottonwood City Cycladers Team ride for wife for the upcoming bike event in May 17th and 18th. I have up to about seven or eight members now with a couple more verbals, so it just might be a little crazy by the time we get there, but it's really, really fun. We did almost 20 miles over the weekend. I did four or five yesterday, and just going to keep doing it. It's really fun.
All right, fantastic. Counsel? Okay, it's been a very busy week with the SciTech Festival. March 20th, I attended the Bicycle Advocacy Committee meeting at Girona, and the group asked to plan the Mayor's Ride for March 3rd, which is a Saturday. They're thinking that maybe more children and families will come out rather than having it Friday morning. So, May 3rd is the Mayor's Ride, and I hope that council can be there and members of the public also. Also on May 3rd is the Bike Rodeo at 11:30 AM at Garrison Park. May 5th through May 9th is the Bike to Work Week. May 16th through 18th is the MS Bike Ride and Ride for Wife. And May 21st is the Ride of Silence, which will begin at 5:00 PM, and that is at Riverfront Backlot, Main 89A Maverick Station. So, it'll go from Riverfront, as I understand it, to the Maverick Station. Let's not forget the Run for the Roses, which will be held May 2nd and May 3rd in Historic Old Town. If you'd like some more information, you can contact Andrea at the Business Assistance Center or anyone from the Old Town Association. On March 22nd, we had the March a Mile for Meals event at the Verde Valley Senior Center. There was a big crowd this year, and our Cottonwood Youth Advisory Commission, Shayla Dowling and crew were there to help out, and some members of our fire department, which is truly appreciated. And afterwards, there was a big breakfast served by the Kiwanis, Denny's, and Randalls. Later in the day was the kickoff festival for the Riverfest Outdoor Science Event at Dead Horse Ranch State Park, and the Verde River Valley Nature Organization, or VERVNO, planned that event. On Sunday, March 23rd, I was invited to attend the African Children's Choir event at Evangel Worship Center, and that was really a beautiful ceremony of children singing. They're all under the age of 10, and they travel around with about 25 or 30 little kids and sing all over the country. Many of the children are orphans and have come out of some pretty dire circumstances. And there were several there that had been through, and they had their degrees in various things, business, economics, and that sort of thing. So, it's just sort of, it's not just about the children. As they grow up, they support them getting their education. On March 24th and 25th, totally enjoyed seeing all the displays for the SciTech Festival at the Cottonwood Public Works, the airport, and the Public Safety Departments, and they put on a great, great events for our community. On March 25th, there was a meeting for the String of Pearls Group and the Verde Front Group to talk about our trip to Grand Junction, Colorado. That will be the 8th, 9th, the 9th, 10th, and 11th. And we're going up there as a community, the mayors from Camp Verde, Clarkdale, Cottonwood, and city managers, and some of our economic development folks in the communities. And this is being funded through a grant from the Walton Family Foundation to the Friends of the Verde River Greenway. Chip Norton is the contact person, and we're hoping to do some networking and just looking how we can work together on river access points and really the Verde Front covers from the top of the mountain. It went to the river, but now it's past the river, and where even Mayor Adams is talking about wanting to be involved as a tributary to the Verde. So, hopefully Sedona will join us, and it will... So, we're past the river now with our efforts. On March 25th, services were held for Danny Scott, who worked in the Public Safety Department. Was he a commander or a sergeant?
Commander.
A commander for our police department. For many, many years, he worked there, and I would like to extend our condolences to his family. On March 26th, Dr. Novak at the Verde Valley Medical Center gave a great talk on what's in the lab, and they had planned, no one reserved for this SciTech event, so they weren't planning on very, a very large crowd, but it was like standing room only. So, lots of people, including children, attended this, this event for the SciTech Festival. So, next year, we'll plan for more people. We're going to have a meeting on Monday at 9:00 AM at Yavapai College, Room M203, to wrap up this year's SciTech Festival, figure out what we can do better or differently for next year because we're planning on jumping right in and doing a 2015 SciTech Festival. It was lots of fun, and it really brought the community together. That's what I really liked about it. So, I attended the archaeology walk that day at the Tuzigoot National Monument as part of the SciTech Festival, and later the public meeting for the Cottonwood General Plan. March 27th was the Mingus Union High School and VAC SciTech STEM Showcase, and that was so neat. They had, you know, so many things there. They had the sports medicine that I went to. I went and saw the, all of the computers in the movie-making Jeff Woods Department, and the laser, not the laser printer, what do they call those?
3D printer.
3D printer, thank you. It's amazing what they're making with 3D printers. I also went over to the Camp Verde's event, and they had a 3D printer also. So, it's amazing, it just really... So, VACT, which is our technical school board district, you know, I never really knew what they did before, but it's amazing. They do a lot in technical, technical education for our children and youth. On March 28th, the City Manager, Bruce Morrow, and I attended the ribbon cutting for the Yavapai Apache Nation Bus and Transit System, and this will connect the nation, Camp Verde, and to Cottonwood, Clarkdale, and then the links transportation system to Sedona. So, it should really add to the ability for Verde Valley folks to get around. So, that was a very nice event. Also, on March 28th was the Yavapai College SciTech Expo, which was very well-attended. I'd like to thank the City Manager for allowing quite a few members of his staff to participate in all of these events, and he was very supportive of that. And of course, our very own Rudy Rodriguez, who did so much for this festival and was very enthused about it. So, I'd like to thank all of our staff. Saturday, I had breakfast with Dr. Jeremy Babender, the Arizona SciTech Festival Executive Director, and his wife and his children. They spent the night in Cottonwood, and then they came down to Old Town to check that out, and they also attended the Camp Verde Archaeology Fair, which was the wrap-up for the SciTech Festival. On the 30th, they went back to Camp Verde for the Welcome Home Vietnam Veterans Day, which was very well-planned and very well-attended. Lots of motorcycles participated in the ride, and Camp Verde did an excellent event on that. As you know, Sedona started it, Cottonwood did it last year, plus we included the Vietnam Wall. Camp Verde did it this year, and hopefully Clarkdale will be able to do it next year to sponsor it. And today, I traveled to Prescott for the Mayor's Roundtable for National Service Workers. I was the only mayor that was able to attend, and I was really glad that I made that effort because there were about 40 people, youth and adults, and then there's a senior program who were at this event to tell us what they do. And tonight, we'll be reading a proclamation, and we have Erica Stone with us, who was... Oh, and we have some of, okay, great. So, we have some of the workers, and this is, you know, the National Day of Service is just trying to get the people in the community to understand actually how many people we have in these positions and what they all do for us. And I learned about that today. So, I want to, you know, make a lot more effort to keep in contact with who's doing what here because it is really important that we know. And these folks, you know, I mean, they, they take a vow of poverty, sort of like being a mayor and a council member, and they, they go out and they spend a year doing these jobs. Right now, we have, they're cleaning up the Verde River of invasive species, and we have one at Catholic Charities. So, it's, they're really doing a lot for our communities, and they're really sacrificing, but I think they get as much out of it as they give. You know how volunteerism is. So, thank you very much. That's my report for tonight.
Mayor?
Yes?
I might have missed this if it was mentioned. City Manager might have mentioned it, but on April 12th is the Brian Mickelson Marathon, half marathon.
Yeah.
10K, 5K, and two-mile walk run, and it's just a great event. I think this is the sixth year for the Brian Mickelson Marathon anyhow, April 12th.
Okay, that's, thanks for mentioning that. And you can get on the web and sign up for the event. You can walk, there's a two-mile walk, there's a run, there's a half...
There's a 5K, 10K, half marathon, full marathon.
And a full marathon. So, it's quite an event. It brings a lot of people up to our community.
We even have people coming from out of the country this year.
Wow!
Attracted people nationally this year. It's international.
Fantastic. Thanks for sharing that.
Great event.
Wonderful. Okay, the next item is, I think what I would like to do is go ahead and move up the check from Nate Wagner and Jesse Wagner, funds raised for the Cottonwood Skate Park. They got a baby with them tonight that probably would like to go home to its own little house.
Well, I figure, you know, taking money is never a bad thing to move up on the agenda. This last fall in October, Jesse and I, after spending quite a few months at the Cottonwood Skate Park, wanted to do something to try to help raise awareness and funds about the skate park. We found that it was a great outlet for a lot of children in the area, and so we had the first annual toy, the fun run with the support of the MMA here in the Verde Valley, and we raised $817, as well as have a nice box of t-shirts to donate to the teen center.
Wonderful.
And we might present this to the City of Cottonwood to go towards the skate park.
Okay.[1199.51][1199.51](Applause).
The fire was a motorcycle run that we started, and we went to different, different local businesses, and we created a bunch of t-shirts and sold those at the event, and as well as got donations from other local businesses, so...
Scrunch the... Scrunch up? Okay, so, thank you so much, $817 on the skate park. We enjoy that. Okay, so, moving back up on the agenda, we have introduction of new employees. Chief?
Madam Mayor, Councilmembers, thank you very much. Tonight, I'd like to introduce you to two of our newest dispatchers, one of which has been here two days, one has been here for a week. First is Karen Michael. Please stand up. Karen began working for the Cottonwood Police Department as Communication Specialist on the 24th. She was born in Phoenix, but lived most of her life in Cottonwood. She has experienced working with special needs children as a teacher's aide. She is a middle child of five, and all of her siblings have names that start with T, except for her.[1349.51][1349.51](Laughter). She is currently dating a wonderful man named Ron, who works at Reese &amp; Sons. She does not currently have any pets, but is very interested in adopting a small puppy. She loves taking pictures, scrapbooking, cooking, reading, exercising, and singing. Karen loves to find the humor and the positive side of things. She can be a little shy at first, but it does not take long for her to make quick friends. She loves a sense of community about the Cottonwood the best. Karen Michael is one of your new dispatchers.
Welcome.[1376.33][1376.33](Applause).
Next is Jessica, which has been with us for two days. Jessica began, Jessica writes, she began working with the Cottonwood Police Department on the 31st. She was recently relocated to the Verde Valley from her hometown of Albuquerque, New Mexico. She was employed as a dispatcher for the New Mexico State Police. Jessica has served our country in the military as an intelligence analyst and continues to serve as a soldier in the Army Reserves. While she is originally from Albuquerque, New Mexico, she has lived all over the United States. Jessica's boyfriend is an electrician and lives in Cornville. We have two best friends, who are more like sisters, live in Virginia and Ohio. She has a Westie named Wallace. Jessica enjoys working out, shooting, reading, and occasional Netflix marathons. Jessica considers her ability to teach...[1425.63][1425.63](Laughter). ...considers her ability to teach people new things one of her greatest talents. She likes the weather and the views of Cottonwood the best.
Thank you.
Jessica.[1437.13][1437.13](Applause). Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Thank you for your service to our country, Jessica. So, welcome to your new jobs in serving the citizens of Cottonwood and the extended Verde Valley, and we wish you the best of everything in your endeavors to serve. All right, the next item is proclamations, and we have three tonight. The first is Mayor's Day of Recognition for National Service. Whereas service to others is a hallmark of the American character and central to how we meet our challenges, and whereas the nation's mayors are increasingly turning to national service and volunteerism as cost-effective strategies to meet city needs. And whereas AmeriCorps and Senior Corps address the most pressing challenges for our cities and nation, from educating students for the jobs of the 21st century and supporting veterans and military families, to preserving the environment and helping communities recover from national disasters. And whereas national service expands economic opportunities by creating more sustainable, resilient communities and providing education, career skills, and leadership abilities for those who serve. And whereas national service participants serve in more than 70,000 locations across the country, bolstering the civic, neighborhood, and faith-based organizations that are so vital to our economic and social well-being. And whereas national service participants increase the impact of the organizations they serve with, both through their direct service and by recruiting and managing millions of additional volunteers. And whereas national service represents a unique public-private partnership that invests in community solutions and leverages non-federal resources to strengthen community impact and increase the return of the taxpayers' dollars. And whereas AmeriCorps members and Senior Corps volunteers demonstrate commitment, dedication, and patriotism by making an intensive commitment to service, a commitment that remains with them in their future endeavors. And whereas the Corporation for National and Community Service shares a priority with mayors nationwide to engage citizens, improve lives, and strengthen communities, and is joining with mayors across the country to support the Mayor's Day of Recognition for National Service on April 9th, 2014. Therefore, be it resolved that I, Mayor Diane Jones of Cottonwood, Arizona, do hereby proclaim April 9th, 2014 as National Service Recognition Day, and encourage residents to recognize the positive impact of national service in our city, to thank those who serve, and to find ways to give back to their communities. So, if you ladies could come up and share a little bit about what you do?
Well, I'm actually a three-time AmeriCorps Vista alumni and a former AmeriCorps Program Manager, and right now, I'm serving in the capacity of an event coordinator for our National Days of Service. So, it's been a wonderful opportunity for me to stick around, to stay involved in national service. So, mostly for me, I just wanted to thank Mayor Jones for coming out today to our Mayor's Day of Service, our roundtable event. And also, you know, I've worked with you on service projects in previous years, and I just want to say how much I appreciate that you have made the investment of time to stay informed about what our members are doing and to reach out to them and to support them. It means a lot as we try to bring more members into the Verde Valley. We would love to, if you have ideas of ways our national service members could continue to help meet community needs, we'd love to be even more impactful and to provide more members out here.
And that was Erica Stone?
Yes, thank you.
My name is Janet Conchi. I oversee the loft over at Catholic Charities, the homeless drop-in center. I supervise 10 volunteers that actually run the loft, and I, today, I learned a new term, NK Coordinator, which is probably what I do at the loft overall, connecting our homeless population or low-income families with resources, whether it be education, or food, or whatever it is that they need. And I've been in service there since March, and my term is up in August, and I'm considering extending that another term.
So, would you like to share, you're having a meeting on, is it the 3rd of April?
The Homeless Coalition is meeting on the 2nd, April 2nd.
April 2nd.
At 1:30 up at the Verde Valley Guidance Clinic.
That's tomorrow.
Yes, that is tomorrow, and the topic of conversation is Housing Authority and Section 8 Housing in Cottonwood, and the impact and the benefits of having a housing authority for the Yavapai County.
So, this would be county-wide, a housing authority for the entire county?
Yes. and the impact and the benefits of having a housing authority for the Alphapai County.
So this would be county-wide, a housing authority for the entire county?
Yes.
Correct. So, and Section 8 housing is, it's helpful because people can, we have probably five or six or maybe even seven apartment complexes in Cottonwood that has, that have reduced rents.
Yes.
But with Section 8 housing, you can move your rent around it, it's not stationary as I understand it.
That's correct.
So you can get assistance in other parts of the city or the county.
Yes.
That aren't necessarily tax credit developments. So, okay, I'll come down and give you your proclamation. Thank you to you both, Janet and Erica, for your service.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
The next proclamation, and we have Erin Mayberry here with us tonight to accept this proclamation and Deborah Darby is with her, helps them out with their marketing. So, "This is near and dear, I know to many councilmembers' hearts when we talk about our community's children. Whereas Buena Vista Children's Services, Inc., has held a successful children's celebration event annually for 21 years in honor of Child Abuse Prevention Awareness Month. And whereas Buena Vista Children's Services, Inc., continues to offer child abuse prevention awareness, children's advocacy, childcare, education, and professional development to the Verdi Valley as well as all of Yavapai, Apache, and Navajo Counties. And whereas Buena Vista Children's Services, Inc., is a community-based grassroots nonprofit organization that fosters innovative programs and leadership to enhance the quality of life for children throughout all our region. And whereas many community members are unaware of the child abuse prevention awareness and children's advocacy services offered by Buena Vista Children's Services despite the organization's long history. And whereas there is a critical need to educate and support individuals and families by designing, developing, and implementing model programs for children, parents, and educators to address the emerging, emerging needs in the areas of child abuse prevention, childcare, education, and parenting. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Diane Jones, Mayor of the City of Cottonwood and the City Council hereby designate April 2014 as Child Abuse Prevention Awareness Month during which parents, educators, and the general public and other children's advocates across the socioeconomic range can learn more about the services offered by Buena Vista Children's Service, including child abuse prevention awareness. We encourage our citizens of all ages to join with Buena Vista Children's Services to celebrate Child Abuse Prevention Awareness Month while having fun at the 21st Annual Children's Celebration. We hope that all of our citizens will recognize that child advocacy helps prepare our children as future community leaders." And Ms. Mayberry, would you like to make any comments?
Thank you for having me tonight, first of all, and I wanted to extend the opportunity for everybody here to come and find out all the services that are in, in our community for kids. So that's really what the children's celebration is all about. And that is on April 19th. And I have flyers that I'm gonna...
So April 19th, at what time?
Um, it's from 9:30 to 1:00 and it's straight up six, huh? Thank you.
Okay. So, thank you very much for all you do for children and have done for recent years. And one more Autism Awareness Month. Do we have someone here from Rusty's? Okay. Karen, all right, wonderful. Okay, so Autism Awareness Month and Day in Cottonwood, Arizona. Whereas Rusty's Morning Star Ranch was founded 28 years ago by a family seeking help with raising an autistic son, an autistic adult son, and whom dedicated their lives to raising awareness of adult autism issues. And whereas, from its inception forward, Autism Awareness Month has occurred nationally every April with individual local day celebrations held during that month. And whereas Autism Awareness Month is a celebration of understanding, respecting, and educating our communities of the unique and special needs of the autistic individual through greater knowledge and understanding. And whereas Rusty's Morning Star Ranch has chosen Cottonwood, Arizona, to officially launch their local efforts. Now therefore, I, Diane Jones, Mayor of the City of Cottonwood, Arizona, on behalf of Rusty's Morning Star Ranch and adults with autism in the Verdi Valley, do hereby proclaim the month of April 2014 as Autism Awareness Month and Tuesday, April 15th, 2014, as Autism Awareness Day in Cottonwood. In witness whereof, I have set my hand to be affixed this first day of April 2014. And Mr. and Mrs. Maddie, do you have any comments that you would like to share?
Good evening, Mayor, Council. First and foremost, I want to thank you for all the service that you provide to the citizens of Cottonwood and to the extended area of the Verdi Valley. Like yourselves, we find ourselves in a situation to be quite unique. Rusty's Morning Star Ranch is only one of 30 residential facilities in the entire country that is specific to autism of adults. Uh, it's quite rampant because of new CDC information that's being released. Uh, up until this past year, we were saying one out of 88 children is now being diagnosed with one form of the very broad spectrum of autism. Uh, new reports are coming in, one in 66. Much of this is due to early diagnosis, the fact that that's not just the crazy aunt that everybody has in the family or the goofy uncle that everyone has in the family. We now have a little bit of understanding as to the syndrome and the disorder. It's not really a disease, it is something that we don't really know what it is. We have consistently been working on doing new research through many, many foundations, but unfortunately at this point, we don't really know what causes it. More importantly, we are in a situation where adults of the spectrum, once they turn age of 18, totally drop off the band. Services are discontinued. ADD and DES is really our only hope here in the state of Arizona with the hope of having respite in-home care for many, many services around our area. Unfortunately, even that is very, very small insofar as the number of people that it can obtain services for. So Rusty's Morning Star Ranch, as was stated in the proclamation, we are a nonprofit. We've been in existence simply because there were caring parents and family members who wanted a safe, loving, nurturing environment for their adult child to live in for the rest of their lives. Uh, these individuals will be with us until the day of their passing and we are trying our very best to maintain that level of human kindness and support for them. This is the first year we've had to go really outside of our realm to ask for donations. philanthropy has kind of dried up as many of the nonprofits have experienced over the last couple of years. And when someone has the opportunity to donate a small amount of money and it's going to service 200 people, they tend to go that direction as opposed to servicing eight. I have eight individuals who live at our ranch full-time, but I have 20 full-time staff that are providing 24/70. So for Autism Awareness Month, we have several opportunities for giving. One is Arizona Kids Day on April 9th, which is the second year we've participated in. We have a, an autism quilt that's being raffled and we also are in the process of having a walk. Our ranchers will walk for donations. Um, it's one of the things our guys love to do is to guard and work with the horses and walk every day. With that, I thank the council and Mayor Diane for their attention.
Thank you. So we would just like to give you this proclamation. And thank you for all you've done for all kinds of nonprofits in the Verdi Valley. You're a very giving person. All right, our next item is a presentation by the League of Cities and Towns and they're going to present information explaining the council manager form of municipal government. And I invited Ken Strobeck, he's the, he is the executive director of the League of Cities and Towns, to come up and I just thought it would be a really great review for the council and the community to understand how does a, a council manager form, form of government work and is, is the mayor really in charge of everybody? I think we'll learn. Ken, if you would come up and share your presentation with us.
Thank you very much. Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. Thank you for inviting me to come up and, and talk about this. I believe you all have a copy of this publication that we produced at the league about a year, year and a half ago called Council Manager Government in Arizona and I'll sort of use that as a basis for my presentation tonight, not specifically in that order, but if you have questions as I'm going through the presentation, feel free to interrupt or ask questions. Don't, don't keep it formal. And Mayor, if I go too long, you give me the speed up or the cut or whatever.
Okay.
So I'm, I'm very flexible. I want to talk, of course, tonight about municipal government in Arizona, which is really unique when you talk about government because municipal government is nonpartisan, highly efficient, voluntary, and we deliver services. And that, that's not exactly what you describe government as being for the most part. Uh, we're not a traditional government. I always say cities and towns should actually be called something else other than government because we really, we really don't kind of fit into that category. We're not like the federal or state government with lots of bickering and partisanship and maneuvering back and forth. We're more the get it done, get the job done, do the service level of government. And so I always kind of like to start off by a discussion of really what is government? Uh, government is all, um, it's very interesting, as I was thinking about doing this today, on the floor of the Senate, they were debating one of the budget bills that they're having a little trouble coming to agreement on between the House and the Senate. And they actually got into a philosophical debate about government today and I thought, well, this is very timely, given what I was going to talk about tonight. So this, uh, there was a summary of that in one of the publications that we get. I want to read just a little snippet of that. And it said that debate on the budget descended into a philosophical battle between two members as each made arguments for the sole, or lack thereof, of the Arizona Senate and government at large. Now, one person, the Senate President, said he twice made the point that government is not compassionate, government is not merciful, that is left to individuals. And then he later made the point that lawmakers had to make difficult decisions and I heard him say this, he said, "What is government? Government is raw power. It does not show empathy or mercy." So that's one perspective on, on what government is. Then Senator Steve Farley countered that proposals to do some more spending in the budget were common sense measures that would help accomplish Arizona government's core role. And he said, "Our job as government is to create a moral budget, a fair budget that gives people a hand up, not a hand out." You see, there's two very different perspectives on government, state government, even within the members of the Arizona legislatures. I just thought that was interesting that, thinking about, well, what is government? There, here you take two people that are part of the government and they both see it from polar opposites as far as what the role is. But what I say is government is a body, this is kind of the dictionary definition, government is a body with the power to make and enforce laws for a specific political entity. In our case, obviously, it's an elected Arizona City Council that answers to the people who put you in office. And there are several aspects about municipal government that make it unique. We make laws, we're called ordinances, but it's really, as I said, secondary to our job of service delivery. Police and fire and water and sewer and garbage, planning and zoning, parks, recreation, libraries, streets and roads, all those things that are used every single day by citizens, all city-provided services. Now it's much harder to name a list that long of, of benefits that you get on a daily basis from the state, county, or, or federal government. I really think that cities are where service delivery happens and that's the impact. We, we like to say, as it says in the publication here, that local government is closest to the people and it really is. I, you know, the, the folks in the audience tonight are in the community and they get to come and, and watch what you're doing and, and every part of your business has to be conducted in view of the public. Not true of Congress or the state legislature or other levels of government. I remember Harry Mitchell, you know, the former mayor of Tempe, told me one time when he was in Congress, uh, he went, he said, "Being in here is a piece of cake compared to being mayor." He said, "The, the real rubber meets the road." When I had a controversial zoning decision and after the meeting, I had to go out in the parking lot and face all the angry people. That's where the real rubber meets the road. It's easy to be a member of Congress." That was his perspective. But anyhow, government's the way we kind of also combine our resources to get things done. We, we can't individually build streets and parks and sewer systems, but we do that by pooling our resources and, and making community decisions. You mentioned the general plan, putting things in place that you as a council have heard from the citizens are priorities for your community. That's really where you come in. That's what the role of the council is, is to be the people who listen to the citizens, who make decisions about where the city is going, to, to set policy direction and to really be the face of government to the people who elected you. And you're accountable to them. Cities are also, as I mentioned, nonpartisan. Now there's always an asterisk when I have to say this because there are 91 cities and towns in Arizona, one is partisan. There's a, there's always an exception. Uh, that's because Tucson, in their city charter, runs on a partisan basis, but they're the only city in the state that actually identifies people who run for office as Republican or Democrat or, or whatever. Yeah, you, everybody may know what political party you are, but you don't run as a political party and you don't organize on the council by political party. You are there as representatives of the people and together you make a council that has to do all your business by a vote of the majority. Now Mayor, you mentioned a minute ago, is the mayor the boss of the, of the whole city? I'm sorry to tell you, the mayor is not the boss. The mayor is the presiding officer, the mayor's the ceremonial head, mayor has some specific extra responsibilities in case of a disaster declaration, but when it comes to a vote of the council, your vote has the same weight as any other member of the council. And the only way that you all get things done is by working together, deliberating on issues, and having a majority vote. And a simple majority is what it takes. And so any four of you can make a lot of decisions and it doesn't always have to be the same four, in many cases, I'm sure, it's a unanimous or close to unanimous vote, but it's the, it's the collective council that makes the policy decisions, that sets the direction for the city. So, uh, what other, what, what other forms of government are there besides the council manager form? Talk about a few of them in this publication, I'll just mention a couple. There's the commission form in which members of the council have various administrative responsibilities. There's the strong mayor form where the mayor is elected to not only preside at the meetings but also to be, in essence, the manager. So if people actually elect somebody to run the city on a day-to-day basis. And then there's the weak mayor form. And then there's the weak mayor form, which is more, it is the collective council form, where nobody is really in charge, and the council simply hires various staff people, but they do that all as one group, and they don't have a single person who functions as the manager. Now, in Arizona, we are very unique, in that we're a very, very strong council manager state. We have no cities in the state that are commissioned, none that are strong mayor. There's a couple that are what you might call weak mayor or council form, that are usually the smaller communities that don't have a lot of budgets, so they have a clerk or an administrator, they don't really have somebody that's a full-time professional manager. But all the rest of them, from Phoenix on down to the very small ones, operate under the council manager form of government. Now, in Arizona statute, there's no requirement to do that. As I mentioned a minute ago, cities and towns are voluntary units of government. I think that's something that's very unique, that's often lost on members of the legislature. You know, when you move to an area, you don't have any choice about whether you live in a state or a county. There's no question, every inch of territory is covered by one of those units of government. But you have a choice about whether you want to live in a city or town. And if you live in an unincorporated area, you can actually create a city or town by going through a process of incorporation and creating that government. So, every one of the 91 cities and towns in the state went through that process, where the citizens, the people, said, "You know what? We want to have more of an identity, we want to have better services, we want to have the ability to control our own destiny." That's the number one thing that we hear people say, is that, you know, growth was just out of control, or, you know, there were no standards for how the city was organized, there weren't good services, so we decided to get together and create a city. And yes, what that means is you're going to have a little higher level of taxation, but you're also going to get some benefit from that, from the services that the city provides. And so, there's nothing in statute that says that cities have to exist, they are allowed under the constitution and under statutes to be created. And there's also nothing that says what form they take. But as I mentioned, all the cities in the state are operating under either an exact council manager or very close to council manager form. And the statutes do say that that is permitted, and so, fine, we can do it, so we do. The system was developed a little over 100 years ago, basically as a way to professionalize government. You remember what might have been happening at the turn of the 20th century? There was a lot of corruption in government, there was a lot of big influence of big business, and, you know, people just had the perception that government was not really representing their interests, it was more representing big wealthy interests and things like that. And so, you had a whole wave of reform that came about in the early 20th century that led to a number of innovations that actually are in part of our constitution. Because our constitution was the last one of the lower 48 that was written in 1911, and then we became a state in 1912. And so, part of that whole reform movement is incorporated into our constitution, such things as the initiative and referendum, that were completely foreign in other parts of the country, and in fact, don't exist in many other parts of the country, recall that doesn't exist in many other parts of the country, and other innovations. And the council manager form of government was one of those innovations that actually emerged out of this same effort to try to get back to a more professional, more honest, more open, more transparent way of doing municipal business compared to the way it was being done at that time, which was that the wealthy people in the community said, "You're going to hire my company to do this particular project, you're going to hire my nephew to be on your staff," and those kinds of things, basically a spoil systems or a patronage system. So, this was an effort to get away from that and to professionalize the management of municipal government. So, it began in Virginia in 1908, was the first official council manager municipal government. Today, it is the form of more than 3,400 US cities, and 144 of the largest cities, and over 1,000 counties use this system. And the city of Phoenix is actually the largest city in the United States that operates with the council manager form of government. And it was adopted by charter, city charter, in 1913. So, it goes a long way back. And I, oh, I mentioned, cities are voluntary. There were 19 cities in Arizona before we became a state. And one of those was a charter city. Anybody know who was a charter city prior to statehood? It's Tombstone. And Tombstone still operates under their territorial charter today.
Wow.
A little piece of trivia there.
That's interesting.
Yeah. Well, so what the council manager form of government does is create a bright line between the roles of the manager and the roles of the council and mayor. And what that does is say that each of you has a specific role to play in the management of the city, and you're not to get into each other's territory when you're doing that. The job of the mayor and the council is, number one, to set the policy, set the direction, approve the budget, approve the ordinances of the city. That's your job. And to be in touch with the citizens and to respond to what they want. You approve the budget, you may amend, you may ask questions, it's your right to go through every nickel and dime and make sure you know what's going on. You also set the goal, you approve the general plan, you lay out the vision for where you want the community to go, what you want the city to look like. You set standards for zoning and land use, and you deal with natural resource issues, water, I know is a huge issue. And you prioritize major public infrastructure investments. That's part of your job. You execute legal and statutory requirements, you carry out the laws of the state, and you provide a forum for the citizens to come and address you about what they want to see in their community. In fact, that's one of only three statutory requirements for cities in Arizona. There's only three things you're required to do. One is to provide police service. Number two is to provide an opportunity for people to come and speak and address their issues to you. And Doug, I forgot, what's the third? It's not fire. People always think, "Oh, it's police and it's fire." It's not. It's police service, I'll think of it in a second. But there's only three things that are actually required in statute for you to do. And one of those is to provide a forum for the community to come and speak to you. And then what you do is you hire professional staff, the manager and his staff, to carry out your directives and your policies. And sometimes there are a few cities that have other direct reports, but in general, under the council manager form of government, you hire the manager, the manager hires the staff. Now, why do you do that? Because what you are involved in is the policymaking and the philosophy and the direction, but you're not the day-to-day operators of things. And that's intentionally done to avoid corruption, to avoid any kind of appearance of influence that's improper, or something that's not being done according to objective, professional standards. And so, I actually looked up in your city code today, and it talks about who has the power in the city. A lot of times, people say, "Well, if the manager is the guy that runs things on a day-to-day basis, then he's got all the power." That is not the case. In fact, your city code says in Title 2.08.020, "The corporate powers of the city shall be vested in the council and shall be exercised only as directed or authorized by law. All powers of the council shall be exercised by ordinance, resolution, order, or motion." So, that's what I was talking about earlier. You have all the power, as long as you can get four of you to agree on what direction to go. That's where the power is, and that's the decisions that are made by you as a council. Then you hire the manager, and here's how you hire the manager. You hire the manager, according to your city code again, only on the basis of professional qualifications. It's not on the basis of who's related to who, whose brother-in-law is who, or who is your biggest contributor, or who's the wealthiest person in town, or any of those kinds of things. It's, the manager is hired on professional, objective qualifications and skills. And then, his job is to hire his staff on the same basis. And there's also a bright line, as I mentioned, about the responsibility between the council and the manager. Can you imagine if you were in a situation in an office or some other workplace situation, or out in an industrial setting, where one day, your boss came in and said, "I want you to drop everything and go do this job." And then, a few hours later, somebody else came in and said, "No, put that down, I don't want you to do that, I want you to go over here." And then somebody else came in and said, "No, no, no, stop doing that, I want you to go work on my house." That would be the situation if each one of you was, had the authority to go and direct staff on how to do their jobs in the city. As a matter of fact, under the city code, you don't have that authority, and that's specifically prohibited. It says that the council shall deal with the administrative services of the city only through the city manager, except for purpose of inquiry, and neither the council nor any members thereof shall give orders to any subordinates of the city manager. That's in your city code. You're actually prohibited from going in and telling somebody, whether they're in the public works department, or finance, or anywhere else, "I'm telling you to stop this and work on my project." You can't do that. You can ask them questions, and you can go to the city manager, but it's his staff, you hire the city manager. Now, conversely, the city manager carries out your directives and your policy and your goal, and your code also says, "The city manager shall not exercise any legislative function whatsoever, nor shall he engage in policymaking, or planning, or institute programs which require official action of the council." So, you see, there's two sides of this very complex organization, and they both complement each other, because you set the goals and the standards, and you have the vision, but you folks are not, you didn't all go to college to be managers and get your MPAs and talk about how to do all the day-to-day operational things of the city. It would be really doing a disservice to the citizens if they paid their taxes and then they had somebody who didn't know how to run a water treatment plant in charge of running the water treatment plant. That's why you hire professional staff and management. Now, sometimes people say, "Well, you're giving too much authority to the manager." Under this system, again, you're the council, and any four of you, when you have a majority, can make a change. You can tell Doug, "Thanks, your services are no longer needed." But that's your right to do at any time. The majority of the council can make that decision, and managers who have professional training and understand that know that when they come in and work for a city, that that's kind of the situation as you find it. And there's an organization called ICMA, the International City County Managers Association. We have an Arizona affiliate of that, ACMA. And they emphasize that there's a code of ethics for managers to operate under, where they don't get involved in political activities, they don't interfere with the operation of the council, but they do carry out the will of the council. And they also understand that they serve at the pleasure of the mayor and council, and that that's just the system that we operate under. Again, it's a kind of a check and balance system. And if you think about it, it's very analogous to the way that major corporations operate. You know, a major corporation will have a board of directors, which would be like the council, they'll have a chairman of the board, which is like the mayor. They set the policy, they organize the decisions, they plan the budget, they talk about where you're going to expand, what services you're going to offer. And then they hire a CEO, chief executive officer, like the manager, to hire professional staff and people that have expertise in carrying out the function of the board and your goals and objectives. So, that's really the model that we operate under, and that's the way the council manager form of government works. And in fact, it has been very successful. There was a quote, and I included it in this booklet, but it's something that I thought was really fascinating, because many large and historically old eastern cities, you know, like Philadelphia, and Chicago, and Baltimore, don't operate on the council manager form at all. And we've all seen lots of stories about how business gets done in Chicago or other places, you know, where it's all on the patronage or the buddy system. And this was an article that came out in the Baltimore Sun in 2009, when they were actually discussing whether they should maybe adopt the council manager form of government. And this was the headline, "City's Governmental Structure Encourages Official Corruption." And this is a quote from that article. It said, "It is clear that developers and other interests perceive, probably correctly, that the best method to gain decisions in their favor is to grease the pathway. Sometimes that grease is pure corruption. More frequently, it is some version of interest peddling that does not quite rise to the level of outright corruption. Either way, it bends governmental decisions away from the public interest and toward the private interests of those doing the greasing." That's what we're talking about, and that's what the council manager system was designed to avoid and to get away from. He goes on to say in this article, "The best managed and cleanest governments in the United States are not strong mayor governments, they're council manager governments." And I think that system has been proven over and over again. So, Mayor, that really concludes my actual presentation on this matter, but I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions from members of the council? Any questions or comments from members of the public on this item? We truly appreciate you coming up.
I'm still awake, yeah.
Everybody's awake, yes. We truly appreciate you coming up and sharing that information with us, and it's especially helpful, I think, the meeting's being televised, so many members of the public will be able to better understand our form of government, and understand that almost all 91 cities and towns in the state of Arizona have that. And sometimes I think all the council members receive comments from the public like, "Well, you guys aren't in charge, and what's up with that?" And so, I think it behooves us to help the public to understand what kind of form of government we have. And if they don't like that form, then they need to change it, but some of the examples you've set show that it's really a pretty good kind of government.
Yes.
Mr. Pratt?
I just wanted to mention that you could go to the Arizona League of Cities and Towns website, click on Publications, and that document is there, the Council Manager Government. And the history of it's quite interesting. I would recommend people read it.
I think that would be a great idea. Thank you for sharing that.
And Mayor, I go to, you know, several national conferences every year, and I'm really impressed with the quality of government that we have at the city level in Arizona. And I think a lot of my colleagues from around the country are really jealous of how well we do municipal government, and how efficient and how many things we actually provide. I talk to them about, you know, "These are the services we provide," and their jaws drop, they're like, "Wow, our cities don't do nearly those kinds of things or that many things." And so, I think you should be very proud of what you are doing and how we get things done.
And I think our citizens, I mean, they seem to really like the services that are provided, and they're willing to work together to provide them through their tax dollars. So, you know, I don't hear anybody say they don't like the recreation center, or the ballfields, or the parks, or the library, or getting water when they turn on their tap. And so, I think our citizens really do appreciate the services that we provide. So, well, we have a little surprise for you. Terrence? Well, I guess he won't be, we wanted Terrence?
Yes, I had an allergy.
Okay, we're going to give a plaque. So, if you would all come down. So, Doug, is there someone else that could take the photo so that you could be on it? And Steve, I would like you to be on it.
Because it's, the League of Cities and Towns serves not just the council, but also the staff. They have many services that they provide to newbie residents. They provide financial advice and services, and they have an attorney's, attorney's list served, that attorneys can all share information throughout the state. And so, they really serve, they have the city managers, you have a list there? So, they really serve not just the council, but all of the staff too. And they've been doing this for many, many years, since all of us who have been on council for a long time have dealt with the League of Cities and Towns. And so, we, the council and staff would like to present this plaque to you and your staff for all of the services that you provide, the benefit of the citizens of our state.
That's very nice. Thank you very much.
Thank you. You're welcome. Have a safe trip back.
All right. Hope to see you all at the new conference in Arizona.
Okay, so, starting back again, we next have the call to the public. This portion of the agenda is set aside for the public to address the council regarding an item that is not listed on the agenda for discussion. However, the council cannot engage in discussion regarding any item that is not officially listed on the agenda for discussion and/or action. Comments are limited to a five-minute time period. And I don't have any forms filled out for a call to the public. Is there anyone who would like to speak? If not, we'll close the floor to the public and move on with the agenda. Approval of the minutes. And, okay.
I'll second.
So Mr. Garrison made a motion to approve the March 11th, 2014 work session minutes, and Mr. Ilinski seconded it. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, and will you please note the record that Councilmember Pratt wasn't here for the vote. Okay, comments regarding items listed on the agenda are limited to a five-minute time period per speaker. Consent agenda. The following items are considered to be routine and non-controversial by the council, and will be approved by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member or a citizen so requests, in which case the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered in its normal sequence on the agenda. Item number one is setting a fee structure for the city's solid waste cleanup day scheduled for April 26, 2014. Excuse me. Request for a one-year extension of the weed eradication agreement with Arizona Weed King. Extension of the airport on-call design consultant contract with CNS Companies. Submission of a Section 5311 Arizona Department of Transportation grant application for funding for the operation of the Cottonwood Area Transit Verdi Links Public Transportation Systems. And item number five is award of an engineering services contract to Atkins for the railroad wash floodplain delineation project. Councilmembers, do you want to pull any items for discussion?
No.
No? And anyone from the public like to pull an item? Councilmember Howdige?
To approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Mr. Howdige made the motion. Mr. Dowling seconded it. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. New business. The following items are, the following items are for council discussion, consideration, and possible legal action. And Councilmember Pratt asked me to bring up the special services agreement with that event company for the Thunder Valley Rally event, so we will call on that item next. And we have Hezekiah Allen to present the item. Some of these should just take a few minutes, so we'll get them out of the way.
Madam Mayor, Council. As you know, Thunder Valley Rally, last year, we had some great successes. We learned a lot from last year. There's things that we plan on doing differently. But for the most part, it was that platform that took us to the next level. And we enjoyed that success very much, so we want to continue that and keep moving forward. So this year, we went out to RFQ, request for qualifications for promoters for Thunder Valley Rally again. We received proposal from that event company for this year's Thunder Valley Rally. And we've also worked with this company during Rhythm and Ribs. Done an outstanding job for us. They're growing with us with these programs, and it's a great partnership between the two of us. Communications flow either way very quickly, rapidly, and efficiently. So staff is recommending that we move forward and sign back on with that event company. I also believe that they're looking at partnering with Brad from Arizona Bike Week, which would add some substantial contacts and resources within the state of Arizona, as he runs a $3 million recycling event down in Scottsdale. And that's been running pretty consecutively for a long time, so. Council doesn't mind, I'll call Gigi up, see if she'd like to say anything. Nope. Are there any questions?
Mr. Pratt.
I have a comment. I've worked with this company a little bit, too, since I get involved in these events. And I just think they've done a great job for the city of Cottonwood. And I think it's really important that the local folks, they understand our community, and they just have a lot of enthusiasm. I think it's just a no-brainer.
Yes, they were with Rhythm and Ribs last year, and so we've already, we know how they operate, and what kind of a job they do. Are there any members from the public that would like to comment on this item? Any members of the council, questions, or Mr. Pratt?
I just wanted to make another comment.
Okay.
People should go to the Facebook page for Rhythm and Ribs, and Thunder Valley Rally. They've done a great job with that, and they're really active. And all it does is, I'm going to draw more people to Cottonwood.
Exactly. Currently this year, we have four national acts, reserve for Rhythm and Ribs. We've lessened, it's pretty impressive, we've been able to lessen the amount of fiscal risk for national entertainment, or obligation, but get more acts because of the genre, and the job Gigi's doing with going after these acts. We've got some pretty up-and-comers. For example, Sam Hunt was voted the number-one up-and-coming country artist on the Taste of a Country website, and we have him booked for Friday night. So that's pretty exciting. In addition to, we have one more slot to fill, and we have approximately 30 barbecue restaurants signed up this year. And these are competing teams. Please don't use last year as an indication of the job that Gigi can do as far as rib competition is concerned. We were, that was a growth year, and we hope to hit full steam ahead within these next couple of years.
Oh, it sounds delicious. So we're talking Thunder Valley Rally, and so any more comments, questions about this event? And Gigi Rock has been, she has quite a number of credentials in her history, and just happened to move to the Verde Valley. And so we're very blessed that we have someone of her connections and abilities to help us out. Mr. Pratt?
Is it time to make a move?
Yes, it is.
I move to approve the special services agreement between the cities of Cottonwood and that event company, serving partnership of the city's Thunder Valley Rally.
Second.
Mr. Pratt made the motion. Mr. Ilinski seconded it. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. Okay, I'd like to bring the next one, which should just take a couple of minutes, request from the Verde Valley Teen Center Commission for financial assistance for the purchase and installation of a fire alarm system for the teen center building located at 345 East Mingus Avenue. And I had a, go ahead and come on up to the lectern. I had a visit with Alan Marks and Sherry Marks last week, who were talking about the cost of this, and brought to my attention that they will not be using the entire building, that the city will be using a good portion of it, actually. And they've also installed a door in their part of the building, so that our employees can access what they need to through the teen center. So it's, thinking about that, it really doesn't seem quite totally fair that we're asking them to spend the whole $3,500. And so they were coming to me and asking, you know, for help with this. And it was easy for me to ask the council to support this, because I have been with them at the farmers' markets, and all of the fundraisers, Vinnie's Pizza, and a dozen others. And, you know, they have about $2,600 in your coffers.
Twenty-two sixty-eight.
Twenty-two sixty-eight. And that is a lot of 50-cent cupcakes that have been made to raise that amount of money. They have worked really hard. And Sherry's done a lot of baking out at the Moose Lodge. So Alan, you want to share a little bit more about your request?
And what we're looking for is, as you know, the city's required us to put a fire alarm system in the old fire station. Right now, we're in the process of doing our remodel. Bob Backus has gotten all the area contractors to donate lumber, drywall, labor. So we're doing a great job. We put a door in at the city's request, so that the employees can go back and forth. We've covered the upstairs, so they have storage in both areas of the station. And the system, we've got a quote on, we've tried to get donations, but they just wouldn't do it for us. It's $3,600 to install a whole system that the city wants, that they require us to have. And we just felt that, you know, with us only using just part of the bottom half, the city has the whole upstairs, the two full bays on the side, and they also have the storage above our game area, that we've also enclosed in, put doors on that for them, so that's private. And we're just looking for the city to either, one, help us with the expenses on that, go half on that, two, fund it completely for us, or three, waive it, and just have us put exit signs and strobe lights in.
Okay, so my suggestion would be that we pay for it, because when they open the teen center, they're going to need their $2,200 to pay for electricity, and any other expenses that they will, they will have. And I stopped by the other day, and, which company was it? Oh, it escaped my mind.
And Madam Mayor, if I might?
Yeah.
This is a good object lesson in the council-manager form of government. The requirement for the fire alarm comes from professional staff.
Yes, it does.
So staff would strongly recommend that the third option is not an option.
I would not consider that.
So.
And I hope the rest of the council wouldn't either.
That sort of illuminates that the council trusts the staff to make sure when things come to you, and make sure when permits are issued for buildings within the city, in the community, that public health and safety is first and foremost.
And that's what we ought to look at. And we know, it is an upgrade to a city-owned building that is being leased to us, and we, for some reason, fail at this teen center, and it is a $3,600 system that is in a building that the city can sell to a developer.
So, Mr. Pratt?
Yeah, and I don't, I don't think you can measure $3,600 with the safety of our kids, a place for our kids to go, to keep them off the streets. You couldn't pay enough to provide that for them, and it is a city-owned building. I think this is a no-brainer also.
Let's just know, we are not charging the kids to come here. So there's no fees for these kids to come into the building. So everything we're working on will be donations, you know? Paying all the bills for the building, and there will be donations only.
It was Lodmel? Lodmel?
Lod, Lod, Lodmel or something?
Yeah. And they were there, they were volunteering their time, and they were doing all the drywall. Lodmel drywall.
Eric, yeah, and his staff.
So they were, and Bob Backus, we want to say thank you to him, because he has been getting all of these contractors in the community to come in and work on the teen center. And we're really hoping, once it's open, that people will participate, that they'll donate to it. But in the meantime, there's about five or six people that have been working day and night to get this thing off the ground, and we appreciate you very much.
Thank you.
So any comments from the public on this item? So I would entertain a motion to...
Motion.
Oh, there's no motion? It's just direction?
There is a motion.
No, I said, I'll motion if you hear no motion.
Okay, would you please?
I think, I think Mr. Dowling had his hand up.
Okay, Mr. Dowling, will you please make a motion?
Either way. I move to approve up to $3,600 of council contingency funds for the Verde Valley Teen Commission, to be used for the purchase and installation of a fire alarm system for the teen center building.
I'll second.
All right, so Mr. Dowling made the motion. Mr. Howdige seconded it. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for your time. Keep up the good work. Okay, moving. Thanks. Oh, yes, will you please tell us about that?
April 12th, we're having a prize bingo.
Will you get up closer to the microphone, so the people in the television area?
April 12th, we're having a prize bingo at the Verde Valley Moose Lodge for the Verde Valley Teen Center. We've got prizes like Page Springs Winery Taste, Trail Horse Adventures, Blazing M., Napa, Reese &amp; Sons. We're going to have about 20 prizes from local businesses. Bingo's a dollar a game, and if you win a prize, we win the game, and all the funds go back to the teen center. Kitchen will be open, so it's April 12th, 11 to 5. That's all going to the teen center.
All right, at the Moose Lodge. That sounds exciting. So hopefully, the community can get behind this event and support our teens.
A great place for people to go after the marathon.
There you go.
They'll be done by then?
Okay, perfect.
A place to go for lunch.
All right, thank you very much. So request from, oh, let's move up to the reduction of the speed limit. We're kind of going backwards here tonight. Reduction of the speed limit on Main Street from Kendra Heights Road to the north end of the city limits. Mr. Scott?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Staff was approached a few weeks ago by a few members of the public, who wanted the city to consider lowering the speed limit on North Main Street, also called Broadway in the Clarkdale city limits. I do want to point out an error in my staff report. It was not the Gray Fox Ridge HOA. It was just a few members, or a few property owners within the Gray Fox Ridge. So, because I think a few members from the Gray Fox property owners would like to speak tonight, so that is a mistake of my part. It was not the Property Owners Association, it was just a few members in there.
Okay.
This is historic 89A. It's been there, and the speed limit's probably been 55 for quite a few years. But there's been recent, relatively recent growth over the last few years, especially this area here known as Gray Fox Ridge, and this area here known as On the Greens. And just so everyone knows where we're at, this is Old Town, this is Main Street going out to Clarkdale, and this area here is what Clarkdale calls Broadway. So these two developments have risen to the request that the city considers lowering the speed limit from the current 50 miles an hour, down to 35 miles an hour. I did confirm with our chief of police, per city code, it leaves it up to the chief of police to set that code, but he was insistent that we bring this to council, to get council's input on this. There is one other issue that I'd like council to consider tonight. This road right now, as set, does not meet the federal standards. It basically, it drops 15 miles an hour, from 50 to 35, and the federal standard is you can only drop in 10 mile-an-hour increments. So there's actually two items we're considering here tonight. The first being, can we drop it from 50 to 45, then down to 35? And then the second item is, would you like to consider extending the 35 mile-an-hour zone from here, placing the 35 mile an hour near city limits? This blue line represents city limits between Cottonwood and Clarkdale. So if council suggests that we do lower it, this will take a coordination effort with Clarkdale, because most of the signs would actually go out into Clarkdale. What we're looking at, this is existing conditions today. There's a 25 mile-an-hour speed limit sign in this location. This is a reduced speed ahead sign here, 35 mile an hour, and then right now is another reduced speed ahead sign here. What we're proposing is that the speed limit remains 50 miles an hour coming from Clarkdale. At approximately this location, we would do a reduced speed ahead to 45, reduced speed ahead, then to 35, and 35, all the way until you get into the area near West Bend. So I think there are members of the public who would like to speak, but that's all I have.
Okay, any questions for Morgan?
Kendra Heights Road is a...
Kendra Heights is approximately right here, yes.
Right under the A.
Okay.
Okay, so we would like to have members, we have one member who's signed a form, but if others would like to talk, there should be some sign-in sheets there, and you can just bring them up to the city manager, and he'll pass them on over. But our first speaker would be Carl Rowe of Cottonwood, Gray Fox Ridge. And it says POA, but as I understand it, there is no POA at this time.
There actually is a POA, but it's very unorganized.
Okay, all right.
I'm Carl Rowe, a recent transplant to Cottonwood.
Welcome.
Our concern is egress and exit from the development itself. As you were going 25 miles an hour, and then 35 miles an hour, now we're trying to slow down, to turn right, while other people are trying to speed up to reach the new 50 mile-an-hour speed limit. We're being pushed off the road. And coming in the other way from Clarkdale, it's all... And coming in the other way from Clarkdale, it's already fifty, so making that left turn against people trying to speed up, it gets even more awkward. My personal feeling is that if we can slow it down up at Clarkdale, it will also help slow traffic down into Old Town, which might be a good idea.
Thank you.
That's all.
Very well said, thank you. Is there anyone else who wanted to speak tonight? Yes.
Sorry, didn't get a chance to fill out the form yet.
That's all right.
I don't write very well anymore, I get kind of old and shaky, so.
If you would just tell us who you are, then, for the record?
I would certainly do so.
Okay, thank you.
My name is Richard Calvert. I live in the Gray Fox Ridge housing development. I've been living here for five years, my wife and I moved in five years ago. It only took me sixty years to figure out that there was a warm and dry place to live. I love it here, it's a great place.
Thank you.
I, I guess a couple of introductory comments, it seems, I've been driving probably for fifty years, or thereabouts, and it seems to me that, over the passage of time, the courteousness of drivers has diminished. You folks, you're all drivers, assume you're all drivers, and you probably noticed that yourself. For example, there are yield signs, and it seems that many members of the driving public think that means merge. I've seen, and I'm sure that you've seen it, where you come to a yield sign, and, you know, the person speeds up to cut in front of you and so forth, yeah, that's not very courteous. Also, speed limit signs, again, I'm sure that you've all seen it, where twenty-five, three means thirty-five, thirty-five means forty-five, fifty means sixty. Anyway, by way of background, I think that, that seems to be the society that we live in, and, like I say, I've been living there for five years, and there has been a fair amount of difficulty coming in from Clarkdale to turn in to Gray Fox Ridge, fifty mile an hour speed limit, and folks come up on you pretty fast, even with your turn signals and so forth, your brake lights, they still come up on you pretty fast. And coming out the other direction, they get pretty excited, and they, you know, they really need to get to Clarkdale, and so, you know, they hit that thirty-five mile an hour speed limit, you know, and shh, going up the hill, and, you know, they're, they're giving plenty of gas to it, and, again, it's, it's like, hold on, folks, hold on.
I gotta turn, huh?
I just want to turn it, just let, just let me get home safe. So, anyway, I'm here in support of the reduction of the speed limit. I'm not naive enough to realize that it's gonna be one-hundred percent adhered to, but hey, if it slows down a few of them, I'll be happy. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you very much. And would anyone else like to speak tonight? Kirsten, could you turn on the lights?
I have some questions.
Yes, Mr. Garrison?
From Morgan, are the speed limits gonna be the same on both sides of the road? Is that the plan? And has Clarkdale been at least consulted on their feelings about the changes and how that would affect and, and move into Clarkdale's? Do they have a problem with that, or?
We've notified them that we're bringing this to our council, and we left it with, we were gonna get a direction from our council, but we didn't send that with them. So, if, if this is the direction council goes, what I'd like to propose is that the city of Cottonwood pay for the signs, have them installed, because the majority of the signs, as you can see, are actually in Clarkdale city limits. What I'm proposing is we buy the signs, but then Clarkdale maintains them in perpetuity.
So, this would all be contingent upon their willingness to collaborate on that with us.
I did have a chance to speak with our police chief right before this meeting, he says, technically, Clarkdale cannot tell us what our speed limit can be, they can say, no, we don't want those signs. The, the feeling I got, Doug, I know you emailed Gail, was that they, they would work with us, this is not a...
Mayor, council, I, I did speak with the town manager up there, and she expressed an interest in working with us on this.
I've, I've come off of Old Clarkdale Highway, and, you know, you're right at the bottom of that hill, everybody's just flying through there, it's, it's always been problematic. Same thing with the turn into the Elks Lodge, or the Moose Lodge, I guess, it's always kind of, you tend to get pushed off the road, as they, as was stated. The other question I have is, is we did a speed study down here in Old Town around the Burnett's House, how, what, what did our speed study show us? Were the speeds that were, that were being carried into the Old Town area?
The speed study that Councilman Garrison's referring to, we did two separate counts, one in which we counted, as it is today, no, no obstacles, the second, we counted, we put barrels out in the roadway to kind of see what would the traffic island do. Surprisingly enough, in, in that portion that we counted, I'm not saying people aren't speeding, but in that portion, which is this area right here, the speed limits were not that high. I think one of the reasons that perceptively they're high is because they're coming out of Old Town, so they're accelerating, they're coming from, let's just say, twenty to thirty and thirty-five, and it feels like they're going very fast. And then the difference between the two counts unfortunately was nearly negligible. We did, we were not able to slow people down significantly with those barrels. I don't, did that answer your question?
Yeah, pretty much, I was just curious if, if moving this thirty-five miles an hour, thirty-five mile an hour zone all the way up to the city line would, in fact, really slow people down by the time they got to Old Town, or would they, you know, kind of blow through there and then speed back up to, to be slowed back down once again? Also, you know, I, I've sat down there, and, you know, the minute people hit Old Clarkdale Highway, or the old West Bend, Texaco site, you know, they get into the accelerator and in the pipes, and it just is such a nuisance. You know, to me, extending that lower speed up through the Gray Fox area would probably enhance the, the ability to sit on your porch at night and not listen to people and their exhaust all day long, so. Anyway, I, I was just kind of curious what the thoughts were on extending that speed limit up, you know, besides affecting those two subdivisions, would it actually help Old Town and the speed coming into Old Town?
I, I think it could, as far as accelerating right here, going north, I think it could help that, because like you said, they won't, they won't be as accelerating here as much as they will in this area. However, coming south, unfortunately, I'm not sure that's really gonna slow them down that much. I, I'd like to think it would, but I doubt it.
Mr. Pratt?
Yeah, I, I think this is a pretty sound idea, because I've driven that, and it is tough to turn in the Gray Fox Ridge, I, I turned in there one day just to go look at the models, and I did feel like somebody was gonna run right up on my back, and I really do think traffic coming the other way would hit Old Town at a slower speed. If they're doing thirty-five before they hit that twenty-five, it's easier for them to slow down at twenty-five than it is from fifty, so I, I support this, I think this would be a good idea, and it'd be safety for all, including Old Town.
Mr. Ilinski?
I would agree, I think anything we can do to slow traffic down into Old Town is a good thing, and I know we're not here to discuss this tonight, but I, I do hope we take a closer look at other ways to slow it down around that curve, but again, I think slowing them down further out is definitely a key.
And the staff is working on a alternative design to put the calming island a little further north on, on that, which... But again, anything we do that draws people's attention to speed will help slow them down.
You should bring that to council on April twenty-second.
Okay, I saw that.
Okay, Mr. Dowling?
I think it's reasonable and sound, but I, I might, I might just miss the Old Town slingshot, as it's been, I've heard of people refer to it as. I think it's a good thing to miss, I would like to definitely take people a little slower through there.
Mr. Hadigee, did you have any comments?
No.
Okay. So, we've heard from the public, and we've heard from the council, and I'm supportive of the safety of the Gray Fox Ridge residents and the On the Greens residents, and this makes good common sense. Mr. Pratt?
Time for a motion?
Yes, please.
I move to approve a speed reduction from fifty miles per hour to thirty-five miles per hour on Main Street from Kendra Heights Road to the north city limits.
Second.
Okay, Mr. Pratt made the motion, Mr. Ilinski seconded it, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you all for attending tonight and letting us know how you feel, we appreciate that. Okay, so the next item is permission for the Verde Valley Leadership Group to construct a shade structure over the new playground equipment at Riverfront Park. Mr. Scott?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The Verde Valley Leadership Group, year two, every year they do a community service project, a fairly large community service project, and this year, that group has come forward offering to construct for the city a shade structure over the near, over the new playground structure at Riverfront Park. So, a couple of those members are here tonight, so I was gonna ask them to come forward. Staff wanted to bring this to council, just to make sure it's something council wanted, because it would be something that, obviously, the city will maintain, but it is free to us, it is a service to the public. Staff fully supports this, but we wanted the council's opinion, so I'd like to ask everyone who is here from the Verde Valley Leadership Group to come forward tonight. I do want to say, take a second to say a few good things about the Verde Valley Leadership Group, I'm honored to be in year one, so I'm not part of this project, but it is an excellent program, and very excited to be working with it.
Although you have been very helpful. You all know me.
We do.
Kirsten Lennon, I work for the city of Cottonwood, and I am part of Class Seven of Verde Valley Leadership. This is Donna Reddigan, she is also part of my class. And as part of our program in our second year, we're supposed to come up with a legacy project, and we went back and forth with a few of them, and decided finally to put a shade structure over the small playground apparatus at Riverfront Park. The big one seemed like a big project to us, so we went for the small one. We got our plans donated by a company down in Phoenix that actually works with the company that's gonna provide the shade sale to us. So, all we need now is your permission to be able to do it.
And maybe a donation from individuals?
Well, if you want to donate money, you know I won't ask for money.
That's really hard.
Seriously, since I pay the money out, so, but, I told Rudy I might ask for money though. But, obviously, we are asking for donations from organizations in the city and different people to fund this project as well.
Now, it sounds like a great project, this is for the little kids that are like zero to two or three?
Yeah.
Is that the age group for that particular?
And there is no shade right now, it's just out, full sun.
No trees, nothing?
No trees, nothing.
So this would help prevent skin cancer for our little ones in the future, and a great idea.
And it would also keep that equipment nice longer, not being in that full sun all the time.
Fewer sunburns for the babies.
Yep.
So, it sounds, and cool, it will keep it cooler, so they can enjoy it more all year long, and, and especially when it gets hot out, otherwise, and they won't burn their little hands on hot plastic, or whatever, it's made out of metal and those sorts of things.
Yeah.
So, any comments from the public? Any comments from council, any more comments? I'd entertain a motion?
Make a motion.
Yes, Mr. Dowling?
I move to allow the Verde Valley Leadership Group to install a shade structure at Riverfront Park.
Second.
Mr. Dowling made the motion, Mr. Pratt seconded it, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Motion carries, it sounds like a win-win.
My team leader is telling me I should tell you how much it's gonna cost.
Okay. So Heather is here tonight with us?
Tell her how much it's gonna cost. We're thinking between five and seven thousand dollars for the whole project, so, so if you have anybody who'd like to donate?
And I forgot my checkbook tonight. I'm sorry.
The city would like to contribute any, we...
So, the city may have to look at council contingency, let's see, this is May, June, April, we have three months left, but it does sound like a great project for the children. Yes, Mr. Martas?
And, and I imagine that, that Ms. Lennon knows where the money is, so she can probably track you accordingly.
She's in charge of the budget, so, so I guess I would suggest that you talk to someone to get that on the agenda, to see how the city could help out with that.
Okay. Will do. Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, so the next item is request from the Page Springs Winery for a waiver of municipal code sections nine twelve oh thirty B, alcoholic beverages, and thirteen sixteen oh one ten F pertaining to misting devices for an event scheduled for June twenty-first, twenty fourteen at Riverfront Park.
So, Madam Mayor, council, staff had asked us, Parks Recreation Department, to kind of help and assist with Page Springs Winery concerning this program, as we have some experience when it comes to these type of special events and the facilities that we have in this area. We did so very excitedly, we contacted Cory with Page Springs Winery, we've been having meetings back and forth, they've gone through the TUP process, they've met with the staff, it's ongoing, as new details come in, we need to discuss Grover things. Cory's gonna come up a little bit and explain the details of the program, but basically, we're asking for, since June twenty-first is one of the hottest days of the year, longest days of the year, Page Springs Winery, along with Dan Luters, requesting misters for this event, to help with the heat of that day. It's health purposes, more than anything, to keep people safe on the day of. In addition to, the Riverfront Park facility has a municipal code that kind of bans glass containers within the park, and we're asking for a waiver for that entire municipal code. Obviously, the winery's gonna have bottles and stuff like that for the event. Plus, they're asking to utilize the park, in so doing, the parking lot areas, they are gonna hope to section off a portion for, as we call it, players, people using the amenities of the park, but not those that are included in the event parameter, which would include the back Riverfront Park, the parking lots, the ball fields, and that area. Anything prior to that would be available to still to the public, they'll fence off the corridor to allow for the liquor permit area. We're very excited with this program, as Cory just told me, this program is a seventy to eighty thousand dollar program, it's gonna bring additional revenue, revenue to this community, and just put Cottonwood's name out there again, so.
Mayor, council, people, thanks for having me tonight, just a little bit about this festival. Historically, we have done a winery festival out of Page Springs Cellars, just us by ourselves, to kind of celebrate the harvest every year, and it's a relatively smaller festival, four to five hundred people. But upcoming, this conversation started as a conversation about our ten-year anniversary, we've been in business for ten years.
Congratulations.
Thank you, yeah, and there's a lot of businesses that have spun off of Page Springs Cellars, including Arizona Stronghold, my own brand, Burning Tree Cellars, so on and so forth, and this is not only a festival about Page Springs Cellars, but really the Verde Valley wine industry as a whole. If you look at your, basically, this is the basic text that we've been, that we put together, just the start of what's going on. We're inviting, I think it's up to twelve different wineries that are gonna be part of the festival. We're gonna, basically, alcohol control's definitely an issue, but we're gonna basically cover everything, we have extensive experience with festival licensing throughout the state, we do approximately twenty-five now, after, after current legislature just passed a law that we're gonna do fifty a year, but, you know, we'll follow all Title Four alcohol laws, Arizona state pertaining to service where that can be held, ID checking, so on and so forth, when doing this. In addition, you know, it's a, it's a family thing, I mean, we, we put on these festivals a lot for the kids, too, there's a lot of things for kids to be doing, there's inflatable slides, there's, you know, we're doing sumo suits and joust and all these things for free for the kids. We're doing a raffle, as well as a portion of proceeds are gonna go towards the teen center, we're hoping to raise at least, I think about five thousand dollars at least for the teen center. Originally, we were gonna do it for the Boys and Girls Club, but I guess they've closed recently. Also, you know, we feel that June around here is not the busiest time, and we think we can bring a lot of people up here to the area. In addition to doing the festival, we're also working with all the different wineries, as well as twelve different restaurants in the Verde Valley, to hold wine dinners the night before, so it'll drive a lot of the crowd up here on the Friday night, as well as, you know, added tax revenue to hotels, and so on and so forth, other restaurants or things that went on their way up. And that's really about it, it's been, it's been quite hairy last couple months, I expect the next couple months to be very busy, and I look forward to being a successful festival, and we actually look to possibly do it every year, 'cause it's one thing that the Verde Valley doesn't have, is a festival that kind of includes all of the wineries, and they do it a lot down south, but it's one thing we haven't really established yet, so hopefully this is a move in the right direction to do that.
Mr. Pratt?
Yeah, I, I think this is a terrific idea, it'd be another great event for Cottonwood. As you said, it's the time... As you said, it's the time of the year when not too many people have events, hence the, uh, the misters. Um, I think we've had a great relationship with the wine industry here. The wine industry's played a major role in what I call the renaissance of Cottonwood, the renaissance of Old Town. We've really worked together well. And I think you're underestimating with 2,000 people, I saw the, the band lineup, I think you'll get more than that.
We're hoping we don't because we're going to stop tickets at a certain point.
Bruce Cockburn.
We don't want it to be overcrowded.
Yeah.
We're happy with family events. Uh, also a, a note about the misters, we only look to bring in two or three for the triage area or the first eight, 10, in case anyone gets hot and needs to go in there.
That was my last, that was a question I wanted to ask. How come misters are allowed?
They take a lot of water.
They take a lot of water. Oh, okay.
Conservation.
Mr. Ilinski?
That was, uh, I'm really excited about the event. I think, um, you know, all the events where we've waived the-
I'm sorry, you had your hand up.
Did I?
You're fine.
Sorry, okay. Um, you can get me back later. So, um, anyway, I think all the events we've held in Old Town and throughout the city worked out really well. I haven't heard any complaints on them. My, my only concern is, is the misting system because we have a state of policy, um, that we, we have a ban on them in the city and I think it's, uh, because of our conservation efforts. And so that's, that's really my concern is, um, is breaking that rule because I, I feel like we set it for a reason and it would be, um, just against our stated mission to conserve water in the Verde Valley.
Madam Mayor?
Yes?
If you don't mind if I jump on that. Dan, uh, wanted to comment on that. He says, obviously the city would very much like to conserve water, very supportive of the, um, the mister ban in general. Uh, Dan's feeling was, and staff would support this, is that, um, for, for a one-time use and for a safety reason, he felt that it, it's not going to be that much water as something on a continual basis that's just going all summer long. That, that's really the effort we wanted to, uh, to eliminate, so I just wanted to throw that out.
And when you think about the health, welfare and safety of the people, that's what we're here to support. So I understand your feelings, but when it comes, it's only going to be at the triage, the health part of the event where if someone gets overheated, I don't think that's asking too much to look out for the health and safety and welfare of the people at this, but I do, I was one of the reasons that we have this, this ordinance and it is all about conservation. So you've been so patient.
I, go ahead.
Well, just on the same note, yeah, the, we were only looking at doing two to three smaller misters that attach to small igloo coolers to have only in a 10 by 10 space, but only when people get hot they go into that area. Uh, in addition, uh, we're also working with the Water Conservation Fund to hurt, to get 2,000 water bottles made in lieu of water, bottled water.
Mm-hmm.
And to have filling stations, two to three of filling stations at the event, uh, we feel like weighs bottled water. Um, and then lastly, we are working with, um, some students at Mingus, um, before the last act, we're, we're actually getting a, a large screen to show movies that they've made about water conservation. So it's actually an important part of our event.
I, I appreciate that. I just, it wasn't clear in the memo that we got.
It sounded like it was going to be thousands of them, right?
Yeah, I know. It was, it was just for health purposes, just in the triage area if people, you know, because it is, you know, the longest day of the year, it's going to be pretty hot.
And to let you all know, the, the, um, collaboration with Mingus is actually a city project. It's, the city is, is, um, they're going to make some conservation films. Uh, Tom Whitmer's been working on this and so the films will be shown at this event.
I remember him talking about that.
Yeah.
A couple of questions. One for you is, is you kind of alluded to it in your statement, is this something you're expecting to come back next year and do again, or is this kind of a?
Yeah.
See how it goes type of thing, or I mean, do you really have plans to?
I'm personally going to do it, but no, we, we want to be part of it every year. Um, and we, you know, we want to kind of spearhead the effort, uh, this year, but it might be something that we might pass on to the city of Cottonwood themselves to take over, um, and us be part of it and more of just, um, a role of participating, not so much as running it and dealing with all the stuff that is involved.
My second question was for staff. How much, how much of the, is this, uh, group paying in fees to use the, the facilities? Is there a?
I want to say 1240.
Yeah, um, Councilman Garrison, that's a great question. They're actually stepping in, they're paying full fees to use the facilities. I think it's 1,230 dollars plus, uh, $300 deposit, which is a little higher than what we typically charge because of the type of program that's at the park. So they graciously stepped up and met our fee structure.
All right, and I guess why I asked both those questions is if, if you're planning on coming back and doing this again, I really think this is going to be a, a nice event for the ci, for the city, for the area. It's at the very worst time of the year to hold something here. Uh, you're putting on what looks like it's going to be an absolutely fantastic, fun-filled day. And, uh, if, if you were to come back and do this again, I would very much suggest that you ask us to waive those fees and those charges and in lieu of maybe some type of a deposit. Uh, because obviously as we've approved tonight, we do pay other vendors to come in and promote these types of events inside our city. So you coming in here and asking to do this and pay the fees to me is, is exceptional. So I, I would fully support you coming back again. I hope it's very successful this year and, and, uh, I think if there's something we can do to help promote it or help you promote it, then, you know, please call on us to do that.
Yeah, we plan on using the city of Cottonwood and as a sponsor too. I mean, just for his help, mostly it's his pretty face that got this. Yeah, we appreciate all your guys' help.
Mr. Pratt?
Yeah, another question. I noticed you have food trucks from the Phoenix area. Um, are you also talking with local restaurants and allowing them to participate or?
Uh, based on the food truck idea, it's more about open flame, talking with the fire department guys and a lot of the local vendors, um, it is a Saturday and local restaurants tend to be a little more overtaxed on Saturdays.
Okay.
And we thought that the night before inclusion of, we want to make a whole weekend out of this basically and to glute all the restaurants with wine dinners happening at 13 different restaurants in the valley.
That would be good, okay.
We felt like that was a good substitution for having them at the event. Um, plus food trucks are, um, from a health department perspective, they're a lot, they're, they're used to doing these kind of events.
It will be the hottest, one of the hottest days of the year.
Yeah, I'm fine with that then.
Yeah, I'm concerned about someone cooking over an open flame inside of a 10 by 10 tent without any cooling.
Yeah.
And there are often times, um, there's fire restrictions that time of year.
Yeah.
Till the rainy season comes, so.
You could probably auction off time in the food truck for like weight loss programs.
Yeah.
I imagine.
But I like you promoting the locals by doing that wine dinner.
A hot yoga truck.
There you go. Throw some dickery in there.
Mr. Bartas?
Um, just a couple of comments is, um, I'm familiar with this event. Uh, when they started it 10 years ago, uh, I was the police chief and, and, uh, not quite 10 years ago, but-
Not quite.
Yeah, but Eric Glomsky asked me to come out on my own time and work security and I did it for several years after that and I haven't done it for the last couple of years because I'm just getting too old, but, um, never any problems. I mean, it was a great crowd.
Oh, yeah.
A very family oriented event. Um, they would set up, uh, play areas for the kids and, uh, it was, it was just a great time had by all and, uh, I can't think of any time where I had problems with, with anybody who was participating. I think the other great thing about this event is it really contributes to, you know, the new brand we have coming out. I think this clearly represents what we're looking for and what the council's kind of looked for in that brand as well. So I, I think this is a perfect event for the city and, and I know when we used to do it, we used to do it, uh, over Labor Day weekend, so it was usually pretty warm there, uh, during that time too, but they still got a great response and, uh, so I think it'll be a successful event.
I hope so.
I don't doubt it.
He's worked hard enough, it should be, right?
It's just-
Yes.
I'll make a motion.
Mr. Garrison, please.
I move to, uh, accept the request as presented.
Second.
So Mr. Garrison made the motion and Mr. Pratt seconded it, all in favor?
For the, for the record, since we're waiving code, can we be?
Okay, more specific?
Uh, I could, I could read the, the motion that staff drafted, council pleases.
Yeah, sure.
Uh, council would move to waive Cottonwood Municipal Code Section 9.12030 and 13.16010 for the Tilted Earth Music Wine Festival to be held at Riverfront Park on June 21st, 2014 and authorize staff to close certain parking areas during that event.
And so, so moved? So you want to withdraw your former motion?
No, I, I stand on my motion as presented. He just-
Yeah, he just laid the foundation.
Okay, you, you're just-
He just, he's spelling out what I, what I stated.
Okay, that's not usually how we do things, but I'll let it pass this time. So, and so you made the motion and Terrence seconded it.
I seconded it.
Okay, and now it's very clear exactly what we're doing here. And so, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
One other matter that Steve and I were talking about a little bit, I, I notice on here that they're saying no firearms and, you know, that seems perfectly reasonable, but I'm not sure that we can do that since this is a city park.
It was under revised statute-
I don't think we can.
3108, um-
Unbelievable.
Says what we can do and this isn't one of them.
I think that would be reasonable inside the wine area, which I think is, is a legal aspect that they have.
Yeah, there is an aspect, if you're serving alcohol within a controlled area, that you have those signs posted, firearms. And we would do that.
And we can work with you on that, Cory.
Okay.
Yes, don't be breaking the law because the state legislature is creating a new law where if we do anything to prevent firearms, we, um, the mayor can go to jail and every person next to her can go to jail and every, I mean, so, you know, you don't want to break the law.
I'm in. Let's stay on principle, let's postpone.
Thank you Cory, thank you, Hesse.
Good luck.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Gigi.
Can't wait.
Yes.
Okay, so the next item is Resolution Number 2744, adopting a fair housing policy, making known the city's commitment to the principle of fair housing and describing actions the city shall undertake to affirmatively further fair housing. Do you want me to do this one, Matt?
Aye, either way.
Okay.
Standard.
It's just our standard, um, thing that we do every April to, to promote fair housing and, um, to say that we will not tolerate discrimination within our city when it comes to housing. So it's all right here in the resolution. Any questions or comments about the resolution?
I'll make a motion.
All right, Mr. Garrison, please.
I move to approve Resolution Number 2744, declaring a commitment to the principles and actions of fair housing, declaring April is fair housing month in Cottonwood.
Second.
Okay, Mr. Garrison made the motion, Mr. Ilinski seconded it, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Motion carries. Deputy Clerk, please read Resolution Number 2744 by title only.
Resolution Number 2744, a resolution of the mayor and city council of the city of Cottonwood, Yavapai County, Arizona, adopting a fair housing policy, making known its commitment to the principle of fair housing and describing actions it shall undertake to affirmatively